It's Toatch Pot time. Key Budge Greg Garrett, joining us today, Jay Schlosser. Welcome back, Jay.
Yeah, thanks. It's been a long time.
It has been too long.
Six months or so, something like that.
And I should say, welcome back Greg.
It's been a long time for me, too.
And for myself as well.
And this seat feels like, you know, it's just perfect. So we appreciate it.
Toatch a pot has grown over the five years we've been doing the show. We've it originally was Greg, Corey, myself. We've expanded. Ashley became a host. Now Maya is Maya does actually a lot of the the different interviews, but I think you and I are slated to do quite a few Greg here in the next couple of weeks.
Well, we'll see. I think the touch buds growed into better talent, right? When you talk about Ashley and Maya and others, you know, so you left me behind, but I appreciate you're bringing me back.
Bringing you back. You're back on board. But Jay, we invite you in because of your technical expertise that you've got in and run a department that runs millions and millions of dollars worth of projects here for the city. And we want to talk about things because like the last time we had you on was probably in the springtime. And we talked about this incredibly busy summer that was coming.
Yeah.
Now we're wrapping up summer. We've still got a few projects ahead. We've got some that we've finished. And it's it's time to get everyone up to date on all the things happening with our infrastructure and how we maintain and take care of the things that we have here in the city.
I'm glad you just said that key because I was going to chime in before we let Jay talk. And this is not about, you know, fluff. This is about infrastructure that matters. The infrastructure that's here, we need to maintain it. So coupled, you know, we bring a couple of things together. We have measure S, of course. Thank you again for that. Touch be city voters, but also grant funding. So we're really good at obtaining grants and coupling that money together. So that we can continue to provide the the highest quality public safety and also infrastructure, maintaining the infrastructure, repaving roads and such like that. So that's your cue, Jay.
Yeah, it takes an incredible amount of work to deliver this stuff and and it sometimes feels like that's not the case, right? Because we'll come out and we'll, we'll pave a road. We'll interrupt a neighborhood for a week. You know, we'll grind it and you know, but we spent six months preparing the bid packages and working with the contractors complying with state and federal laws. And and preparing ourselves for these moments so that we can deliver what the city needs in in the least impactful way possible. And so if you've ever been really annoyed with the traffic pattern created by construction, I would only say to you that that you'd be amazed at how efficient that actually is in terms of getting things done and delivering. We we try very hard to make the the public's infrastructure function for the public, and that includes when we have to repair it.
That's right. And so we have three different projects going on simultaneously as we speak. Three different contractors and three different parts of the city. So let's start with Capitol Hills.
Yeah. So we've got two of them are grant funded. One of them is measure S. The grant fund first one is Capitol Hills. So that area has seen some development in the last few years and a few more coming, coming down that way. If you don't know where Capitol Hills is, is the hospital, think the hospital. That's the section of roads out there that were constructed back in the late 90s. So they've needed a little love. So we've got, we're going to go out there, repair a lot of broken concrete, and then we're going to slurry seal and or grind and overlay, meaning remove an inch or two of asphalt and and put fresh asphalt down. A slurry seal is just a ceiling coat that goes over the top. It's a little less robust, but it but it still achieves the purpose out there. So all new black roads out there. That's every road out there is going to be touched and improved. So your trips to the hospital or to the post office or to pick up a Starbucks will be a little smoother. And the stripes will be clear. And anyway, we're, we're excited. That project needs to get done.
And it's worth noting that the the construction will be happening, but there will be signage in place. Obviously, you know, be aware. But there'll always be a path of travel to the hospital. There'll always be a path of travel to the post office. Nothing is shuttered. So just be aware of your surroundings and we appreciate it. And when we're done, it's going to be just beautiful, brand new out there.
We talk about the difference between we do the grind and overlay, the slurry seals, or it's a complete redo. It's based on the condition that the road is in.
Correct.
So you guys look, I know in talking with you and with Don Marsh, our Public Works Director, you guys identify what is the need to make this road last its longest? Because that's, that's the ultimate goal, right?
There's a lot of variables in play, and those are the primary ones. But cost is too, right? So each of those different rehabilitation techniques costs dramatically different amounts of money. The other factor in it is how much traffic is on them. You know, who's going, what kind of traffic trucks versus cars versus semi big rigs versus? And then the volume of those, all those are variables that play into the decision making process that that we go through. So you know, it's it's truly not that simple. It's not like, hey, go, go put some black stuff down on that road. We really do try to get the best bang for our buck out there. And make the right decision for the longevity of the roadway and the nature of the traffic. So yeah, a lot at play, but that's the plan.
Well, there's real science that goes involved. You know, it's the math. It's the you, like you say, you look at the weight of the vehicles, how many vehicles, you know, and those those costs. So should we do a complete? You know, start from dirt up? Or do we just go down an inch or two based on that? Or is it the slurry seal? And I just appreciate the amount of thought that goes in. And I think that's what I really want to kind of hit home. Being the Joe Citizen is I want to know that when government's doing something, there's a little bit of thought. We're not just slap an asphalt down because we've got a truck full and we got to put it somewhere. There's actually thought where the need is. What's going to be the best thing for the taxpayer buck?
Yeah, Don has done an amazing job. He's got a 10 year plan that he produced. It's one of the first items he had when he was, when he came aboard here at the city was he spent time and took the whole city. We have what's known as a pavement management program, which is literally a computer program inventorying every road, every condition and every needed rehabilitation. And now we start putting the pieces of the puzzle together. That's the job. And then Andrew, city engineer, his job is to take the pieces of the puzzle that have been forecasted and turn them into the documents that we need with the contractors and those relationships we have with contractors actually execute that vision. So anyway, a lot of moving pieces.
Great, great team working, you know, together, getting things done. You know, this is the second year, third year actually going on, you know, providing better infrastructure, improving the infrastructure, maintaining the infrastructure. And we're just, we're hitting on all cylinders. Couldn't be happier. Another project we have key is on Denison Road. So this has been a project that we've, again, a couple of different grants, pulling, you know, different funding sources together. We've been working with utilities, Southern California Edison, AT&amp;T, the school district, you know, on and on and on. And, you know, one step at a time, undergrounding poles or removing, you know, moving poles to different locations, different things like that. But let's talk about the Denison Road project.
Yeah. So maybe I'll bring everyone back to that tragic accident that we had at the high school. I don't, man, I can't tell you the year, seven, eight years ago.
Seemed like yesterday.
Yeah, we had a student, a vehicle, driver pushed on the wrong pedal, basically. And and their vehicle went over sidewalk and injured a student. I think if I recall correctly, the student survived and thank goodness.
It was a non fatal.
But but it really highlighted for us. So just in case the world wonders, we do pay a lot of attention to those moments. And so we started hunting ways to make this safer out here. We understood pretty immediately that it was going to take a big, big poll. It wasn't going to be a you know, $50,000 problem, which is a small amount of money in our world. You know, it was going to take a much bigger effort. And so we started looking for funding and we found a active transportation program money, which is money we've used before for bicycle and pedestrian focused improvements. And and the project proposes to make some safety improvements for crossing pedestrians right there in front of the high school and at Anita, where the junior high students might be crossing Denison Road. And then making some north, south pedestrian improvements, filling in gaps in sidewalk out in that area so that we can better organize the way students move. Now that's an interesting challenge. It's it is truly herding cats to get our kids to to sort of think about safety in that regard. But but we're trying by design to build infrastructure that that they will naturally choose those safer routes. And so that's the target when we do this kind of stuff. And and there's no perfect solution to that kind of stuff, but we're pretty excited to deliver $2 million project to kind of fill in these gaps and make these pedestrian improvements in that area to get these power poles that were at the intersection Denison Valley out of the way. So we can widen that intersection and put in those pedestrian crosswalks, et cetera. So as always, when you're driving around in a school area, please, please slow down. You know, pay attention to what's going on. Being late for work is is an absolutely preferable reality to getting a ticket or getting into an accident or endangering a child. So we always encourage people to pay attention to those moments.
Right. And that was a concert, if you will, between all the utilities, the school district. We met with the school district key many times about what is the best approach to, you know, crosswalks and those sorts of things, you know, what are the patterns? Of parents and, you know, kids picking up kids and school buses and people that walk from here to there, from junior high to high school and so on and so forth. So we came up with a really good plan and I'm excited that now the the pencil to the paper is actually, you know, paint and asphalt and you know, push signal, you know, lights crossing, that kind of a deal. So good stuff.
And part of that plan was, and we were talking about talking with the school district, people will say, oh, why didn't you do this in summer when school was out? But it was, there were so many moving parts. And when you're dealing with Southern California Edison, and as large as they are, we really had to make sure that their element was done before some other things could be done.
Correct. And and a project of this size, first of all, takes longer than the two and a half months that the 10 weeks now that is summer, right? It shrinks every year, it seems like.
It does.
But yeah, 10 weeks wasn't going to do it to begin with. So one way or another, we were going to impact school. But yes, the the reason we didn't, we had hoped to start three or four months earlier and get at least some of the project to land in summer. But that power pole relocation at the corner was an extensive effort. It's pretty hard to explain to people without nauseating detail about how complicated it is working with these utility companies to get that stuff done. They they have a job to do and their job doesn't in their mind involve traffic. That's just they're in the business of delivering power to people.
You know, it'd be great to smash everything into that 10 week, you know, period, but it's just not possible. But I reflect back and Jay, last night, the city council meeting, and we'll be going over that in a moment, too, some of the agenda items. But you you reminded everybody about this master plan for transportation in our valley. And just last year, we did ribbon cutting on the pinion extension, pinion road extension. So there are different opportunities to get from here to there. Right? Not one roads, you know, pushing everybody on one street or one road. So we would just encourage people, you know, find alternate routes. The road will remain open, but there will be detours and things like that. So you know, make your own choices. But just be aware that construction has already started. You know, we talked about Capitol Hills a moment ago. We're talking about Denison Road now. The contractors are out there as we speak, and the actual contractors I saw on the downtown project. So this is a third project. We're starting on repaving some of the downtown streets. So let's talk about that.
Yes, it's even more than that, too. So downtown is at the core of it. We're doing a lot of F Street, which runs east west here, one street up from Tatchby Boulevard. And then we're doing Robinson, which is from basically Tatchby Boulevard to the to the southern end of the roadway, which I think is D or C.
Down by the school district.
Down by the school district office. Yeah. We're also doing Cherry Lane, which is kind of up off of Tucker between Elm and and Tucker Road when and one of the big ones that kind of hasn't seen any love in a lot of years is up there is Arabian, Napa Lusa. Those are up in the very, if you've never been out there, you probably have never been out there. If you don't know somebody that lives there, it is in the extreme northeast corner of the city on north of Highway 58. You probably see it when you drive 58. And it's an older neighborhood, a county neighborhood that that was annexed into the city years and years ago. And and I don't think it's seen any serious asphalt in a long time. So we're getting those two roads. That's a big deal. Those are really help those residents out in that location. Let me think, where else? I think those are the primary roadways. Brentwood.
There's, yeah, just a lot of, you know.
We should say that with F Street, it started last year, that F Street was
Good point, Key.
It was started at Mulberry and it worked its way to Curry, all the way to Curry.
Yeah.
And so this is kind of the continuation of that as we kind of look at that.
Finish off going from Curry all the way to Snyder and also the grindings from, you know, there were grinding the streets, Jay, and we're taking those grindings and grinding the existing alleys, but and taking that kind of rubbish away, if you will, and putting this new grinding down with the binder. So all of the we're hoping to use to eventually repave, I'll say repave, not really repave, but the the alleys will be reconditioned.
Yeah, rehabilitated, I think is the word I might use. And and those are alleys are exceptionally difficult roadway network to fund. You know, and I, you know, we get it. If you're a resident and your driveway is off an alley, we completely understand your frustration.
Road grant for an alley. It just doesn't exist.
There's no money for that elsewhere. And it's such a low volume road because it's truly only used by trash trucks and people who are who live there. And so those are often very difficult to fund. So we've come up with a creative solution. Where we take pulverized asphalt from these projects and then we run it through, we've worked with the contractors, actually, who have been instrumental, frankly, in in coming up with a creative solution. We run those grindings through their paving machine. And then oil them when they're done. So they, so if it comes out of the back end of the paving machine, envision this, it lays it down like a flat thin rec tail mat of of these grindings. It's not new material that's been mined out of the earth, turned into asphalt and shipped up the hill from a from a quarry to us. It's material that's here. And so it's really just the labor and the equipment to put it down on these alleys. And and while it's not a new road, it is a significant improvement to what's in the vast majority. So we're going to do nearly all of the alleys.
So you're recycling and repurposing the waste that's picked up.
Yeah. And we're excited to see their longevity. It's not a new road. It's not going to last 25 years.
This, you could see Jay animated. He's like so excited about this, but it is very exciting that we're able to kind of kill two birds with one stone.
Because otherwise you got to pay to haul that away.
Correct.
So you're
And then you got to pay to haul something new in.
Right.
You know, that was the way of yesteryear in all cities, but not here. We're, we're actually using it again in our city.
So as they're picking it up and they're grinding, they're able to then, is it right away? They just go right over to these set alleys and and lay it back down?
They have to, yeah. Otherwise they have to stockpile it in a middle spot. So the contractors are great at efficiency, right? So when we write specifications, our target goal is always to say, this is what we want it to look like when it's done. That's the engineer's job. But the contractor's job is to go, okay, how do I take the 17 steps from here to there to deliver that product? And so and and they're great. This is the the wonder of our, of the way we do business, right? Between city and private contractor is is we tell them what we want it to look like and they and they start coming up with great ideas for how to efficiently get it there. So yeah, the concept, you grind it up and you take it over and put it right back down. You can stockpile it from time to time, meaning you set it somewhere and then pick it back up again. But for obvious reasons, that's inefficient. So the contractor is always looking for, you know, they bid the amount of money they want to do the work that we want. And then if they can make it even more efficient, they make a little extra profit in the process and and we're great with that. That's
You know, a perfect example of that is a project that we have going on now at the airport key. Nearly $7 million improvement project at the airport drainage and taxiway relocation and such. Company called Miller out of, I believe, out of Bakersfield. They are outstanding and they are, you know, we're grinding the old taxiway out, but we we took those grindings over to the rodeo grounds. And so we're spreading those out on the rodeo ground, parking lot and the different roads. So that we can, you know, continue to enhance the event center and rodeo grounds. So it's just a great partnership. Miller has been outstanding at the airport.
And I know the rodeo talking with TMRA, they're appreciative because it's the the perfect size where people are able to walk on it. And it keeps the dust mitigation, which has always been an issue for them that they're always having to rent water tanks and things to keep dust down. So I mean, it's problem solving.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. So flipping to the city council meeting on Monday, Jay, we had a couple of things that you presented and were approved by the city council. An MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the city of Toatchby and the county of Kern for the rule 28 under grounding of the utilities on Valley Boulevard.
Yep. So that this item just extends and adds to the budget necessary. So that again, part of that where we spend a lot of time with the utility companies working on on how they do business here in the city and how we work with them. But the goal is to get the power lines down on Valley effectively between Tucker and Curry. That's a big lift. If you've driven that route, maybe you've never noticed, but there's a lot of power lines.
Oh, I don't know how you would not notice.
Yeah, well, it's just background, but we need those out of the way. We've got another project in design right now to to improve Valley between Mountain View and Curry to make another improvement in that segment on the north side of the road. So those power poles are in the way for that. And so we, we want those poles out of the way. And so the county current has been a wonderful partner of ours. There is a county island that is west of Mountain View. And so for that reason, we sort of said, hey, if you, can you guys lend us some of the money you've got? Store it up for this type of activity and combine it with our money and and we'll do the, we'll lead the project because it's here in the city and you're down in Bakersfield. But and they've said, yes. Now, a couple of times. So it's a $7 million project, very expensive project. You know, but could not be frankly, more pleased with the relationship we built with Kern County Public Works. And their sort of willingness to say, yeah, we're not planning on using that money and we'd like to see the base, you know, look, if you live in the city, you're still a resident in the county, too. So, you know, they see those us as their constituents as well. So this is a project of mutual benefit to the residents in this area. So pretty excited about that one. I think it's surprising, I think, to a lot of people how much that changes the visual aesthetics of a roadway to to not have the power poles on them. And I think people are going to be pretty surprised and go, wow, this looks really good.
Yeah. And so these days, you know, key with new development, undergrounding is required. But this is something that was back in the day, you know, originated and, you know, it's a, I don't want to say transmission line, but they they're cluttered with a lot of lines. So not just Southern California Edison, but AT&amp;T Spectrum, so on and so forth. So I'm looking forward to cleaning up that area and making it look a lot nicer. That's a project that probably won't start for another year or two and boots on the ground, if you will. Real quick, we had another project that the the county or sorry, the the city have such a great relationship with the county. I was thinking about them. The city council approved, and that is a little bit of curb gutter and sidewalk on the north side attached Boulevard between the park and ride and J&amp;H Automotive. We're not approving the project, but certainly approving another step in the funding process.
Correct. Yeah. So a little bit of your gas tax money SB1 goes into a sub fund known as state of good repair. That's transit money. And so we don't do a lot of transit here in the city. We don't have get or, you know, you know, current regional transit comes through and takes you to Bakersfield, Lancaster, but we don't do a lot of interior transit here in the city. So it's always a little tricky for us to figure out how to utilize that money in accordance with the the rules, but work immediately adjacent to the transit center counts. And so where we kind of saw that project is we need to finish the sidewalk in that area and clean that up. And and again, those are the kinds of projects that don't feel like much until you finish Tatchby Boulevard. And one day you're going to drive down that road and go, look, this is a complete road. You know, like I live in the big city now, I, you know, but I think
We do have dialer ride though, little plug for dialer ride. So if you ever need a ride from here to there, you know, you can always make an appointment or ring them up and they can come pick you up door to door kind of deal.
Yeah. And it's what? $2? Something like that. It's pretty, pretty affordable. Yeah.
Just have to have a little planning in advance.
I know, Key, you do a lot of advertising for them. So thank you again for that. Yeah. And then just real quick, Jay, you know, we talk about this global plant transportation planning. Last night, the city council agreed that we should potentially look at redesigning the summit interchange. So this is a partnership between the city of Tatchby, the county of Kern and Caltrans. So that interchange was designed and built back in the day and it's it's kind of constrained, you know, with with the semi trucks and and you know, the commuters coming and going. So we'd like to make that a little more efficient. So this is something that's five, 10 years out. But certainly we have, you know, pulled the trigger, if you will, on that project.
Yeah. So it all starts with the general plan. That was my message to the council last night. We we build this thing called the general plan that, you know, that is this big, you know, a photo rich document that speaks to who we want to be as a city in 30 years, you know, and that's required by law, but it it has its value. And part of that document includes circulation, meaning where are roads going to go long term as the city changes? And so that was a little bit of that last night was we've had our eye on that interchange. We've done some study work already. And the next step is a fairly intense study that Caltrans requires in order to to kind of book a project and to see it as a real project in their world. And of course, because the on and off ramps are theirs, that's it's in their world. You know, but this is where we come into partnership with Caltrans. They're not looking at on and off ramps. They consider those to be a local agency's issue, right? Like if, you know, they, their job is to move people across 58. They understand that interchange is a part of how people move. But if you want to make it better, they kind of expect you to lead that. And so we've been talking to them about it. They get it. They see why we need it. So does the county of Kern. They understand that's regional to this Tatchby area. That interchange is very regional in nature. So all of us kind of threw our heads together and we threw our hand up and said, we'll volunteer to kind of kick this off. And so the council last night agreed to let us hire a consultant who specializes in these larger transportation projects. And to kick off that study, project, study, report, PSR. And and so that's what we're going to do.
Yeah. So good stuff.
And it reminds me that when we talk about the general plan and and circulation, the pinion extensions that were, that took place a year ago. Those were a part of this that's in the plan. And they do come to fruition. But I mean, the the public creates dirt roads.
Yeah.
And the the foresight is already there for these. And then we were able to make those come true a year ago.
And that's well said, Key, because that's exact, a dirt road is the public's way of telling you where a road needs to be one day, you know, and you guys all might remember Challenger Drive, too. We built back in like 2007, Greg. I, you know, that's also one of those things where you're going, okay, where's this need to go? How do we get people from this place to a mile away? Not just how do I get somebody from from Subway to Walmart? It's, they're, they're a piece of that. So that's exactly right. So pinion was a piece of this. And so is this interchange. And we've got a couple of others. We're always tracking.
And you know, the the network in the city is not just for city citizens, residents, you know, people that live in Stallion, Bear Valley, Golden Hills, you know, the shopping, the hospitals, the schools, you know, all of those things. And I think last night I mentioned, you know, we're trying to create and we're designing and creating a network, building a network of north, south, east, west corridors, right? We have 58, we have Tatchby Boulevard, we have Valley, we have Highline. You know, east, west, and then we have, you know, Denison, Stuber, Curry, you know, on and on and on, so that people have choices so they can be as efficient as they can be in their lives. So it takes time and planning and bringing things together. So we appreciate all the partnerships, the county, Caltrans, Caltrans is building a new maintenance station. I think we've talked about that before, actually, over behind tractor supply, a large investment, $15 million plus. And that's because they've recognized the need to continue to upgrade the maintenance in the Tatchbury area. So good stuff in the queue, working on it now. And, you know, this next coming several weeks and maybe a couple of months. But we had a lot of successes over the last year or so, too. Valley Park, we opened Valley Park with the five aside. So congratulations to the city team. Pickleball courts at the police department.
Getting used quite a bit.
Yeah, last night, city council meeting, I was shocked. There must have been 40 or 50 people, you know, taking lessons and and it was really a good feeling. Jay, we completed the Brentwood sidewalk project.
Back in late spring, yeah.
That's right. So good stuff there. Some sidewalks over on I Street.
Yeah, let me go back to Brentwood. We're, it's like we knew what we were doing. We fixed the sidewalks on Brentwood and now we're going to repave Brentwood. So I just want to point out, that's the kind of thing we
Some planning.
We do actually pay attention. Doesn't always feel that way. I readily recognize when you drive a road, you're like, why'd they do it that way? But
Well, it's funding sources too. You know, sometimes I've seen in the past, people criticize the city. Why did you put in that handicap ramp to nowhere? Well, the handicap ramp was, you know, paid for by a certain grant. And then we have planned on new money or different money for the sidewalk or the road, you know, those sorts of extensions.
Sure.
But it may be a good point to make right now. And I say this a lot. Call me, call me, call me, email me. You know, if you have a question, I either have the answer or I will get the answer for you.
Yeah.
So don't, don't be left and don't leave yourself in the dark. Some improvements at the senior citizen center. We continue to work with our seniors and their parking lot and some railing and different things to make their parking lot a little more safer, safe as it can be. And then BK, we have a small project at the BK Theater, Jay. Why don't we elaborate on that?
Yeah, pretty excited to work on that one. We're just adding three or 400 square feet to the back behind the stage, which is outside the building. So we're going to add building to the back of the BK. We've got a little spot there. And I can only tell you the TCTA folks, the Tatchby Community Theater Association folks are pretty excited. You know, they're sort of prone to easy excitement as a group. They're, they're fun, actually. We really, it's interesting when you get a couple of engineers and a bunch of thespians together in the room, it's
Now that's a podcast.
But actually, we get along great. And we're so excited. They are, we are hoping to make that improvement because we've known since we built the BK, Greg, do you remember this? This is 15 years ago, that it had a really small backstage. And so that really affects what they can do in terms of shows and sets and the quality of the show. And they know that, we've known that. And it's always been something they've struggled with, but we're in a position now to be able to make this little addition to the back, couple of dressing rooms. And a little bathroom area, and that allows them to reconfigure the stage. And they're pretty excited because this gives them a chance to change the way they do plays. So by the way, if you haven't had a chance to hit one of their plays, they are amazing for our little town. I love it. It is very intimate, too. The thing I like the most about it is it holds about 100 people in there. That's it. And the seats are like 10 feet from the actors. You're like, there's not a bad seat in the house. And it is very, you're very close to the action and they are excited. They, every production I've gone to, they they do an amazing job and they're local talent. Anyway, so can't plug it enough. We are excited to see what they're going to be able to do when we give them this a little additional piece of space. It's going to be great.
Yeah. I just saw Death Trap, the last play. It was great, fantastic. The set design, amazing what they can do with that limited space.
Space. Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
Very creative. And we came out of it just, just enjoyed every moment.
Tatchby has a really cool mix of people, you know, on one side, we have the incredibly talented, smart technicians and engineers working in the renewables, the aerospace or mining, whatever happens to be. And then we have the incredibly talented artists, you know, actors and painters and
Muralists.
Muralists, Regent Power is heading up the, you know, reestablishing or the murals. And then we have Mark Pistona, a world famous aviator and and painter. He's painting right now, Key, he's painting as we speak, the electrical utility box out in front of the VFW on Tatchy Boulevard honoring, you know, the the different arms of the military. So go by and say hello to him and give him some words of encouragement, but great stuff. And then, you know, we had an amazing summer, right? All these events. right? All these events just going on and on with the Chamber of Commerce, Mount Festival, our Green Street. Get down. I mean, I think I heard you say we had 60 plus events, you know, in the city over the last couple of months. We have some more coming up in no particular order, Hometown Christmas. Right? That's going to be here before you know it. The other day I saw a post or something saying 100 days till Christmas. And I thought, what? How did that come along so quick? You know? But that's going to be a great day. Hometown Christmas led by you and your staff and then partnering with the chamber for the Christmas parade.
Saturday, December 7th.
There you go.
And the Hometown Christmas fits right in between the Christmas parade, which starts at 5:30 in the evening, an evening parade, which leads up to the lighting of the Christmas tree at the depot and the daytime events where you can have breakfast with Santa. You can take photos with Santa at the depot. And then there was about a four hour void where there wasn't anything going on in the afternoon. So that's where we decided to step in between one and five and, and put together the Hometown Christmas. It's going to be geared for families, particularly children under the age of 12. Lots of activities. And then a lot of handcrafted vendor made, or vendors will be there that's selling like Christmas gifts that kids can afford to buy for their siblings, their parents. So there's going to be a, just a real hometown feel. And it's a third year.
Third, I was just going to say third annual, and it continues to grow and you're, you're hosting a couple of public meetings. If you can't make the meeting, call Key and, you know, get on board. And then before that Veterans Day, we have Veterans Day Parade on November 11 downtown. And wrapping up at Central Park, there'll be a ceremony over there. So we invite everybody to the Veterans Day.
10 o'clock is the parade. They're looking for participants in the parade. So if you'd like to celebrate and honor our veterans, Dean Peterson at American Legion Post 221 is accepting applications to be in the parade. They really would love to have people that are interested in entering, let them know early because they canceled last year because there was not enough participants. They would love to have the parade, but they want to make sure they've got enough people in it to be worth the effort that they have to put in to celebrate our veterans.
Right. That's right. And so the veterans, we can't thank them enough. Honor Flight, if you're so inclined, donate to the Honor Flight and where they fly veterans from Kern County to Washington, DC. So.
And they have their breakfast on the fourth Saturday of every month.
Right.
And that is a fundraiser, an ongoing every, every fourth Saturday.
Right.
They have that breakfast.
And then Apple Festival coming up here.
Mid-October.
Mid-October. Okay. Two day event, Saturday and Sunday with downtown events. The rodeo is going to be.
We should say that the Apple Festival is going to have a, a new footprint this year. So it's going to be on, it's going to be on Robinson. It's going to be on Green Street and it's going to be on F Street. And it'll go through the parking lot. That's the north side of City Hall. So it'll be kind of a circular event where it hasn't been, it used to run up and down Green Street and then cross at F. This to me made a little bit more sense when we talked about planning with the chamber, parking, just accessibility. It just should flow a little bit better.
Right. And we're working with our public works department and our police department to make sure that it does flow, but it's also first and foremost, safe.
Correct.
For the visitors and residents alike. So looking forward to that. I know the carnival is, is scheduled to come back. It'll be at the rodeo grounds. And then it'll also be a rodeo on Saturday night? Is that right?
Yes.
So looking forward to that. And then Thunder on the Mountain, September 28th here in the next week or so.
Yeah, that's going to be exciting. And that's going to be right here on F Street. And, and I want to say it's green also. I'm, I'm forgetting the footprint right in front of me, but I know F Street for sure. I want to say it's a crossing pattern. So I think it's Green Street and F Street.
You won't miss it. If you come downtown, you can't miss it. They'll have two or 300 cars.
They'll have food vendors and, and entertainment and it'll be a good time. And then everyone will start up their engines at noon and hear that big roar, the big thunder appear in Tehachapi. So it'll be a great event. But that has now become its own event. It used to be a part of Mountain Festival. And now, you know, we constantly are adjusting. COVID, we made tons of adjustments and, you know, we talked about Walmart and you don't even have to get out of your car to get a TV. It'll get delivered to you, you know, outside.
That was so crazy. I mean, just a quick story. I'm sitting there getting a little prescription.
In the drive thru.
In the drive thru. And I see this guy drive up in his truck and he's just, and he pops his tailgate down electronically. Two Walmart people, employees bring out a 72 inch TV, put it in his, the back of his truck and he left. And I sent Key a text. I'm like, what in the heck just happened? I mean, first world benefits. I'm not sure. You don't even get out of your car to buy a TV?
Those are some of the positives out of COVID. Businesses learn how to do different things, change their business models.
Suppose so.
And that's one of those benefits. So it's, it's those adjustments that are being made.
I'm still that touchy feely guy. I gotta like try on the clothes. I have to go look at the TV. You know, I'm not going to, on my phone, order something.
Well, last year with Hurricane Hillary coming through, tropical, downgraded Tropical Storm Hillary by the time it hit Tehachapi, the Thunder on the Mountain was washed out. So it had to find a new date. So it had a standalone date in September and it did so well, it became its own event. So it was removed from Mountain Festival, became its own event. So it could just be the featured item for that weekend.
And I heard a little whisper about maybe bringing the Grand Fondo back next year.
I hear that.
We'll see what happens.
Here, there's some madmen that are, that are saying, yes, this is going to happen.
Is that what you're going to put on my office door, madman? And then, you know, we have several businesses that have, you know, opened in the downtown area and, and the Tucker corridor. And we want to welcome all of them. Just real quick, Jersey Mikes, you know, they, they put up their sign really quick, but they haven't done anything inside. So people are asking, what's going on there? But balls in their court, completely have a permit to do whatever they need to do. So we're looking forward to Jersey Mikes. And then Anytime Fitness is inked a deal with the shopping center there in the Save Mart Center. And I know that they're taking applications for discounted membership at this point. So we're looking forward to Anytime Fitness. It's a chain.
Yeah.
And, and then we have the new wine place on Green Street.
Castillo?
I thought it was Bodega de Castillo.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, Jay.
Yeah. Did you see how I, I kind of.
Yeah, pointed at both of us at the same time.
Someone help me out. It's the new wine bar.
Yeah. It's immediately north of Darlene's Swell Toys. So if you know, right there at the corner of, of H and Green.
Yeah. And I've been meaning to go over there. I've been every Friday. It's just, you know, whatever.
It's super cool inside.
But I cannot wait. And I've heard so many good reviews.
Yeah. If you want to go over and, and just hang out with your friends for a couple hours and chat, it's a, it's a perfect venue.
Why don't we take our wives there on Friday, Jay?
I think that's a great idea.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right. Let's do it. So we'll, we'll reserve a table now. I want to sit outside though. They have a great patio right on Green Street. It's amazing. So can't wait. Can't wait. Lots of good things going on in the city, Key, Jay. Appreciate everything that everybody does. And always, you know, people have questions, call us.
Yeah. This was the summer of projects and events.
Yes, sir. And now we've set the pace and set the bar higher and higher and higher. So lots to do. We better wrap this up because we have a lot to do.
Yeah, we do.
We gotta let Jay get back to work.
Yeah, that's about right.
You know, Jay, thank you again. We appreciate it. Thanks for the update. I know we dragged you in here in, in spring and now it's kind of like, let's, it's the rap, but it's, it's, it's important to make sure everyone understands that there's a lot of thought that goes into these things. And people see the short term as like, this doesn't make sense. And it's like, there is vision, there's long-term planning. And I think when we explain that, people have a, a better understanding themselves of.
For sure.
Why things happen.
You know, Key, we couldn't do it again without our partners.
Right.
You know, we've mentioned a couple, the county of Kern, the school district, Caltrans, Golden Hill CSD, you know, all the others, you know, Tehachapi Cummings, just whoever they may be, and they know who they are. We could have a podcast on partnerships, quite frankly. Because at the end of the day, we're just all citizens of Tehachapi, right? We have some political boundaries.
Yeah.
But the taxpayer doesn't care about that. They just want things done.
You know, when it gets down to effective communications, I mean, that is part of the plan is dealing with your collaborative neighbors. We're going to have Kern County Public Health. Bring, Kerrigan is going to come in with members of her team to talk about things that we talked to her about. We're going to have our police chief, Richard Stanridge here, because we've, these units collaborate and talk about different things. So that's an upcoming episode of Tehachapi Pod. But just to kind of follow up on what you mentioned.
I know I did a little video for them and people have said they've, they've seen my ugly mug on social media or something. But yeah, we're happy to help out in any way we can. We appreciate all the assistance that we receive.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, guys, thanks so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Jay.
All right, folks. We appreciate the time you spend with us here at Tehachapi Pod. If there's a thought or a question based on today's conversation, send it to media@tehachapi-cityhall.com. We'll catch you again soon, right here on Tehachapi Pod.